Wow, this is...
We can bring everybody to the table, please.
I'll shuffle.
I'm gonna go sit next to Will.
Will you be my friend?
So you can see that.
Won't you be my neighbor?
Come on, come on, pretend we like each other, let's go.
I thought he was off a bent bone.
Thank you, Tim. I'll support your motion. You know it's gonna be, but I'll support it.
That's why we're moving over.
Okay, now we're gonna shift to see the...
Okay, I'd like to call to order the board workshop, uh, to start at, uh, 6:30 on our assessments thus far, and if you would kindly join me in the pledge of allegiance in a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, thank you. Okay, before we get started, um, I'll ask board members, if you do have questions, if you would write them down, please, and make note of the page number that they're on, and we can address those at the end of the session because they may be answered, well, during the session. So you would indulge me on that, please. With that being said...
Thank you, Mr. Rossner. Good evening, everyone. It's that time of year again, it's the 27, 2018 Assessment Results Presentation. Really, the state of the district, I like to call it. The governor does the state of the state, and I'm here to deliver to you kind of where we stand in relation to our assessment data. Um, I'd like to thank Michael Klein, who spent countless hours with me trying to capture this data with me in a way that really showcases our strengths and our areas of deficit that we know we have to work on. And I have the building principals up here this year with me at the table, because they have shared their, uh, their assessment data with their staffs already. So if you have any specific questions in relation to the schools, they'd be happy to answer those questions for you. So I wanted to start off with the assessment flow chart, because oftentimes at Budget, we're talking about things like universal screeners, such as PSAT, and how they operate. And I thought it would be important for the board to better understand how we use the types of data that we have. So we have three types of assessment data. We categorize them in the, um, under the columns of universal screeners, and those are the assessments that all children take, K to 8 and 9 through 12. There is a change in assessments and when they're given, and I'll talk about that a little later, but all kids K to 8 take NWEA two to three times a year. And that exam measures reading and mathematics across districts, and gives us a snapshot of how kids are performing in those areas, and, most importantly, gives us projections on how they may do on the Smarter Balance State Assessment. The PSAT picks up where NWEA leaves off, and you were kind enough to support PSAT implementation in grade 9. It is already in place in grades 10 and 11, because in 11th grade, we test students for scholarships, and if they didn't have the opportunity to take that, they may not have, they may not qualify. In speaking with the college board, the more time students are exposed to the PSAT, the more they are able to self-correct and do better as they take the assessment over time, in 10th and 11th grade, and then eventually for SAT. The, on the SAT, they'll perform better. That results in higher college entrance rates, the ability for kids to make choices about what they want to do if it's in career, and may even afford them opportunities for scholarship. So the PSAT gives us a pretty good snapshot of how kids are doing in relation to how they will perform in the future on the SAT. And that assessment scores in mathematics and literacy as well. Our last universal screener is the running records that we use as a snapshot on how students are reading, so that we can determine what their independent and their instructional reading levels are. And we use their instructional reading levels to create plans for groups of students in terms of our instruction, to help support them growing over time with their ability to read, comprehend, and become fluent readers. And that has really helped us to create stronger interventions for students and to strengthen our classroom practice to support student learning. State assessments, you've seen these before. Smarter Balance is given once in the spring. It's given to students in grades 3 through 8. And then our grade 11 students take SAT School Day with us, where they're tested in reading and math. If they are applying to colleges that require writing, they can take the SAT outside of SAT School Day to be afforded that opportunity to take that exam. And of course, we have our classroom assessments. These are the day-to-day assessments that teachers give to students in order to see how they're performing as they're going along in a unit of study, and then at the end, to see how they're applying new learning. This just captures exactly what I just said about the Smarter Balance assessment, which is where we start off. The most important thing on this slide for you to really think about as we go along are the achievement levels, and that's the last bullet. The highest achievement level you can attain on Smarter Balance is a 4. When we look at our data tonight, we're capturing it on how students are performing in levels 3 and 4. And we will talk about the number of students when we talk about NWEA that are below, uh, great, performing below grade level, and are in need of intervention. So these are our historic, um, our ELA historic performance rates. New Milford's in blue, just to give you a quick visual on where we stand. If you look at last year, we had 50.9% of our students scoring a 3 or a 4. In 2017-18, we have an increase of 7.4% growth in just one year. We attribute that to incorporating running records again, knowing where students are in relation to their reading performance. We also attribute that to the institution of the Columbia units in reading and writing, and the strong support of our academic coaches and teachers, and looking at data, and making decisions about where kids are when they're planning for their instruction. So we're extremely excited about that. When we look at our math historic performance rate, it's important to note, and I'm gonna just flip back for a minute, I don't mean to do this to you, but if you look at 14-15, where we started off, we had 52.8% of our students scoring a 3 or 4 in literacy. When we flipped to math in 2014, we started at 40% of our students scoring at a 3 or 4. The reason why I bring that to your attention is because we are at 47.1%, and if you look, we're, we're only slightly above the state level and performance, but our growth in mathematics historically is at 7.4% since 2014. Our growth in literacy is 5.5% overall. So, um, we are growing exponentially in both areas. What we're, what we know about our math performance is several things. We know that in 2010, the Common Core standards came into focus. We know that we had several different programs in place, and we instituted one common program across districts several years later. Um, when I get to SAT, we'll talk about how many program changes those kids have gone through who took the test in 11th grade, and how that may have impacted them. But we've had steady growth with a big hill to climb. Teachers didn't learn how to teach math the way that they're asking to teach, they're being asked to teach it now. There's a heavier conceptual base and less on skill and drill, which leads to a whole different dynamic in the classroom in terms of how you support student learning. And so we've spent a lot of time working on not only how to teach conceptually, but looking at the math practice standards and the shifts in math over time to support teachers. So our internal data, when we talk about, this is our state results, but we, we talk about our NWEA results, they're actually more promising than what we see here in the snapshot from the state last year. This is just a summary of our performance. It's really exciting in ELA, um, we talked about that, 7.4% increase. If you look at our DIRG in the state, they had less than 1% of an incre, uh, less than 1% of an increase. So that speaks volumes to the hard work of our teachers and our instructional coaches that support the teachers, and the work that we've been doing with curriculum instruction and assessment. We went from 23rd out of 24 districts in the DIRG to 20th. That's a big move. We're up against some really big districts who, um, have outpaced us for several years, and we're gaining on them in ELA. So we're super excited that our kids are performing at the levels that they're performing at. And we are the fourth highest in the DIRG for growth. Our grade 5 still has the highest growth rate, this time the highest growth rate in the state, and we're only behind, and look at the names of those districts, Simsbury, Westport, and Chester. So we're very excited, because we're not only moving, we're moving all students, and we see increases in our subgroups as well. In math, as I said, we're maintaining our performance with how many students are reaching our benchmarks, and we've had more students make growth in math than compared to last year. So we see that evidenced in NWEA, which I'll show you in a little bit. And we did slide in our DIRG, but we know it's a result of climbing out of that, of where we began historically, when we were, when we only had 40% of students at that level, performing at that level 3 and 4. So the CMT and the CAPT went away last year, and the state instituted for the first time the NGSS assessment, which is the new science assessment to measure the new state standards. It was only a pilot, so we don't have any results at all from that assessment. We were supposed to get participation rates, we have not received them yet from the state, but we, we should have a very high participation rate, because we monitored it, um, all the way up until the very end. And with that tornado last year that hit, um, I was emailing the principal saying, "How are you doing? How are you going along?", and they were gracious enough to say to me, like, "Don't worry, we're gonna make it. We're right up against the deadline, but we're gonna have all, um, all kids who can participate, participate." So this year, though, participation and how our kids score will count. So I'll have that data for you at this time next year.
And Alicia, NGSS is the next generation science standard...
Thank you.
For those of us who are allergic to acronyms.
Thank you. There's a lot going on here, a lot of acronyms, I apologize.
SAT, I think we all know, because we took it.
That's right. That's true. So the SAT, that's designed to assess academic readiness for college. We deliver that during the school day, and what we're looking to do is see how well kids are prepared, and what their overall scores are, and what opportunities they have to apply to colleges across our state on average. All of our 11th graders took it, and here is our overall score. So in, we're in blue, New Milford, our overall score is a 1060. When we look at what the average New Milford student, what colleges they could apply to, 1060 would get you into the University of Connecticut, which is a very prestigious institution and difficult to get into. So we're excited about that. And you look at the state at, with an overall score of 1019, even though we took a dip from 2017, we're still significantly outperforming the state. We also know about SAT, that each year since it's been instituted, the exam itself has created, um, there, there have been more and more challenging questions that require synthesis and analysis. And when I look, looked back at our, with Michael, on our SBACK data, and we drilled down with the teachers to look at how we're doing, and what's going well, and what's not, we were able to find out that communication and problem solving were areas of weakness for us. It reminded me of on CMT Strand 25, it was problem solving. Every district in Connecticut was in search of how to really master that strand. This is kind of the same situation, problem solving and communication. So we're seeing that issue that we're having systemically also show up for our kids in this dip in academic performance on SAT. So that, and when I talk about the work of the district, that will flesh itself out in our plans for ongoing work this year into next year. I thought I'd show you the physical fitness historical rates, um, and give you a little bit background on this. If you look at New Milford's historical rates, um, we were always kind of i, in the 35th to 40, 41, 42, 43, percentage points of students actually passing the exam. Last year, we were at 35.3. When I looked at what was causing this, we had to look all the way back, Michael and I, to what it takes to actually pass this assessment. You have to pass all four sections of the assessment, the pull-ups, the push-ups, the sit-ups, and the mile run, in order to get a pass on this test. If you remember, last year, we rewrote all of our physical education curriculum, K-12, and I've asked the principals to really monitor that curriculum, to make sure that each child is getting practice a couple of times a week at least towards making their goal of being able to attain what the state is asking them to do. Participation rates also count, and we've been monitoring that closely. It's specifically challenging at the high school when you work on semesters, because sometimes a student may leave, and you weren't able to get a portion of the test in, and then they automatically wouldn't pass even if they had three completed. So I asked Mr. Shakur to meet with the department head. We've come up with a plan to address participation, but across the district, this is a bigger concern in looking at how can we get students to pass all four, rather than maybe two or three. And we do know it's the mile run and push-ups that are causing us to be at that 35.3. You may be having flashbacks of your own experience. Universal screeners, we have the NWEA assessment that I talked about earlier. And we're gonna start, though, with the PSAT, which was given in the fall. This, we broke down the PSAT in ELA on the left, math on the right. And because it was given for the first time in 9th grade, you can see the 9th grade, the 10th grade, and 11th grade, the percent of kids making benchmark in New Milford, and the percent of kids meeting benchmark for the state of Connecticut. If you look at our grade 9, 72% of kids met the benchmark in New Milford, where only 59% made it from the state. That's wonderful and aligns beautifully with what we're seeing in, in NWEA, in Smarter Balance. So we're always looking at multiple data points and our internal assessments. So we're looking for this to grow even more over time, as we're intervening earlier with our reading data and our writing supports. In grade 10, 73% of students met benchmark here, and in grade 11, 75%. Next year, when I show you this slide again, my hope is to show you the grade 9 and the grade 10, side by side as a cohort, so that we can see if what college board said we'll experience with kids taking the exam multiple times is gonna show up in our own internal data. But we're outperforming the state of Connecticut by a mile in ELA, and we're very proud of that. And the same is true of math. Grade 9, grade 10, and grade 11 are listed there for you to see. These are the percentile changes. Now, this is K to 8, NWEA. This slide could be a little tricky, so I want to help you understand that we would like, based on NWEA's benchmark, we know that if 60% of our kids can have an, pass NWEA, in that 60th percentile, I should say, that will equate to a 3 or 4 on the Smarter Balance assessment. If you look at where we stand in reading right now, we're at 59.4%. We're inching extremely close to that 60th percentile. What that tells us is that over time, as the kids are passing through grade level to grade level, when they hit the oppo, when they have the opportunity in 3rd grade to take Smarter Balance, 4th grade to take it again, we should see that number equate to more 3s and 4s, and less students needing intervention or additional supports. So that's very promising. Same is true of math. We're seeing overall indicators that our kids are attaining more and learning more on this assessment in math, which is helpful, helpful for us to know, because as I showed you earlier, when you look at Smarter Balance, it looks a little bit more daunting to look at that score, and you think, "What's happening?", like, we're not really growing that much, when we are. We've grown significantly, and this is showing that over time, this will show itself in that data, and we should see more growth. Here's the comparison. On the left, NWEA projects that 50% of kids will make their projection. Okay? This is from their 2015 norming study. This is a national test, so they test small groups of kids over time, and then they do a lot of research and come up with that number. So they know that on average, 50% of kids will make their projection. When you look at us in reading, we have 59.2 kids make, percent of kids making their reading projections, and 57.9 making their math projections. And remember, we want those to be as close to 60% as possible, and we're getting there. So we're very, very thrilled to see that. On the right, that is the percentage of overall growth. NWEA says that 100% of kids will, should reach their overall growth over the course of the year. So if you think about it, on the left, you're probably thinking, "Well, if only 50% make their projection, how are all of them supposed to be making their, how are all of them going to make growth?" The projection is based on how much they may make. Even if they don't make it, and they've grown, they're getting inching closer to getting growth, which gives them 100%, excuse me, in that projection. So when we look at reading, we have 117.3 kids making their growth. And remember, hundreds the target, and 112.2 in math. So what we're doing is working, um, and we're gonna determine what it is that's not working so well in communication and problem solving, and really have a laser-like focus on that. This is the at-risk slide that last year, we had a little trouble wrapping our head around, because we go from growth to all of a sudden, like, "Oh, no, the, below the 20th percentile." This slide are the at-risk kids. So when you look at the number of kids that were at risk in 2016-17, and you look at the climb in 17-18, you might think, "Wow, that's pretty alarming." But there's a couple of things that we know about this. This data was taken last year when that tornado hit, and we had to close the window before, well, at a certain time, and we couldn't keep it open longer, because we use this data as one indicator of placement for students in our district. We also use this as one data point for summer programming. And so if you wait too long to close the window, you don't have the data that you need to help you make an informed decision. That being said, we had also changed our pacing. So we had students revisiting, teachers revisiting, excuse me, where they were in their pacing, and what they may or may not get to, um, what's a major work of the grade that had to be taught. And that's, that gets tricky, because they're doing their best, but they're up against the clock, and we can't give them more time. And so that's what we believe we see evidenced here. Um, we have really ramped up our supports and intervention in each school. We're consistently looking at anomalies in testing, students that might need retesting because they had a higher performance at another time when they took NWEA. We're even able to analyze how long it took a student to take the assessment. On our end, if it takes longer than it should, or has historically, we're able to talk to that child and see, like, you know, is there something happening, or do you need to retake it? So, um, some of that is in here, um, but we're constantly assessing on an individual basis as well as looking at this overall percentile score. So this is just some of the summarization that I wanted you to see. Um, we know that not all of this data is a result of weaknesses in all of our curriculum, but in parts of our curriculum. We need to dig deeper on what may be missing, um, what we can do better in terms of support, and what we need to continue doing what we're doing as a district and build it. But we're very proud that what we see in NWEA as a predictive measure of how our kids will perform, and the opportunities, most importantly, importantly, that it will provide to them once they leave, um, our district are very encouraging. We're on target to outperform the DIRG, as I said earlier, in English Language Arts, and we're determined to make it only a matter of time before we're closing in the gap between us and the DIRG in math. AP. So, um, we frequently talk about the AP exam here in New Milford, and how, how are our kids really performing is key for you to know. In 2018, um, we're in green, Connecticut is in blue, and the global is, I asked Michael to incorporate the data from students who took these courses all across the globe, because it's important for you to have, like, another layer of this, to understand, like, how did we really do? It's one thing to look at yourself against Connecticut, but overall, how is everyone doing? So in 2018, we had 60%, 67% of students scoring a 3 or higher on our AP exams. Now, this is a combination of all of the AP exams, so it doesn't drill out how kids did on individual assessments. And we know, because we have kids take the exam if they're enrolled in the course, and they want college credit for it, that they're taking multiple exams. So we wanted to see, is that affecting their ability to pass the, the courses? So that's coming up next. Um, when we look at the enrollment, and there we are, in 17-18, enrollment was at an all-time high, because we required students to take the exam. We had 666 tests that were taken, and out of the 666 tests that were taken, there were 433 students who passed the exam. So there's still, uh, there is a significant uptick in the number of kids passing and attaining that 3 or higher for college credit. So that's also very encouraging. You've seen this slide before, so I don't want you to be alarmed by that 82.2%. Um, you've also seen the, seen the slide on the right-hand side. This is the 2017 graduating class data. I have, have a window into the 2018 graduating class data, and it's extremely exciting and encouraging. So I want to give you some hope there. The data here at 82.2% was a result of what you see on the right-hand side. We had 342 students that made up the class of 2017 that year. We know that six kids transferred out of district. If they go to another district, and they don't maintain that four-year graduation rate, and they don't graduate, they actually count against our graduation rate. 11 students went on to adult education, which means they were signed out of our high school and participated in that, that program. Six students were retained, and in high school, what that means is they didn't earn enough credits to go to the next level. What we know is happening with the majority of these six students, and looking at their transcripts, is that they came from other districts, and they weren't on track to get to 26 credits, because maybe their district had 24 or 25. 13 students discontinued schooling, that means they dropped out. Uh, 306 students actually walked across the stage that year. There were 25 more, and when we really drilled this down, student by student, we picked up that they weren't coded correctly. And so they, we missed out on having them incorporated in our count, because once the state closes the window, they send that data off to the federal government, and they can't reopen it. So that's why, you'll see, I recalculated our rate below with the state once I found that those students actually went to summer courses, attained their credits, but there was a disconnect between, um, when they finished and the person who is collecting the data. But we've since, we're, have been able to navigate that and control the data coming forward for the class of 2018 and beyond. If we look at also, what, what also affects the four-year rate, cohort rate, is the number of students who transitioned to Litchfield Hills. It's actually a transition in the state's eyes, and so they end up in the six-year cohort. But if you have a large number of students who transition to Litchfield Hills, they're actually still contained in the denominator, meaning the total number of students who would have graduated, and so that lessens the, the count of graduates. However, we know that those students go on to do amazing things, and even though they're not in our four-year count, we look forward to capturing them in the sixth year. So that's really how the state works, and that's how they, um, figure out the account of, this is part of the accountability index. So the state reported our graduation rate at 82 point, I should say 2, not 8. However, with the 25 students that we found that were, that should have been coded correctly, it would have been 89 and a half. And Josh and I shared this with you last year when it came out. This comes out at a very interesting time of year. It's always very early in the spring with a lot of data coming earlier, um, actually about a month ago. We were in receipt of the data to, like, view for the first time. a month ago, we were in receipt of the data to, like, view for the first time. The state will continue to send us that data. Now that they have my contact information, it comes directly to me, Mr. Shagru, and the person who's doing data collection, so there's three I's on it. And like I said, our graduation rate for 2018 is extremely encouraging so far, from what I've seen. So with all the data that you've seen, when I think about improvement initiatives and how we could do better, I was reflective about how we're currently using our Curriculum Council. They've worked very hard with me to develop the new template for curriculum writing, a process for vetting. We've looked at job descriptions for our team, our team leaders, our head teachers, and our department chairs, and we thought, how can they help with the vetting process? How could the coaches help? We've looked at all of our data that we can look at with teachers and as a district to determine next steps. But I really want to hear from the teachers in the field who are using the programs that we're using, and I want to do it in a vertical, like, a vertical study. So we're going to form vertical teams as a part of Curriculum Council. Yesterday, I met with the council. They're going to be, we will be inviting more people to join the council. We're looking for teams of co-teachers. We're looking for teachers of every grade level, because we're looking to have some rich conversation about what's taught before kids come to me, and what should they be seeing when they leave me. And they have not had that opportunity, and to be perfectly honest with you, it's because we're missing a layer here in New Milford to look at curriculum and standards directly with that committee and with teachers in that way. The coaches are kind of wearing two hats, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, hopefully, at our next COL meeting. But we, that is an impediment to not being able to do this more consistently than we had hoped. But we're going to start with the council. We'll have a few more meetings over the course of this year, and then we'll determine next steps based on what we have in place and what we're able to do moving forward. We're in the middle of a phonics program pilot right now, so I, I'm going to be bringing to the board a recommendation for that program. We're going to budget for the programs, both programs. We're going to decide which ones actually may cost a little bit more and put that one in the budget just in case, because a decision will not be made on that pilot until closer to the end of the year. I need a full year of data with the teachers in order to come to determination about which phonics program needs to be implemented. That was based off the state's visit with the literacy protocol when they came in and met with us about data teams and where we had deficits and assessments. So that will be included, and we're going to continue to coach into reading and writing units of study and mathematics. I was able to hire several new coaches this year because others had left district to pursue other endeavors, and we've come together. We're doing a book study on instructional coaching, The Art of Problem Solving, together with teachers. I've met with every faculty except for one, like, Northville's last on my list, but last but not least, to talk to them about what the role of the instructional coach is. We're, I'm looking to have the coaches go in, meet with every teacher, create an informal goal, and have a cycle of feedback to help support them in something that they're really struggling with, to have someone to problem solve with, so they don't feel so alone. So that's the work for this year. We've started a focus on looking at how you're writing learning objectives for students. How clearly articulated is it? Are you making sure that, as you're creating lesson plans, that each opportunity kids have to practice that objective is in a progression, meaning they're having multiple opportunities that possibly ramp up or include supports? And how are you assessing? Because it's all related. And we feel very strongly that with that level of focus on the objective this year and thinking through the components of your lesson, that that will help support teachers better understanding the depth of the standards and identify additional areas for us where we have more work to do in our curriculum that needs to be addressed. So we're hopeful about that. Teachers are working on continuing giving high-quality feedback to students across district. The administration is looking to support teacher efforts. They've started this year. We've come out the gate pretty strong in August and October with some really good professional learning. The teachers were excited to be in their buildings in October, and I'm looking forward to our professional learning planning moving forward for the remainder of this year, which will include instructional supports from the coaches, some department chairs, and even the principals themselves delivering some help to the teachers. And we have the department chair at the high school and the PE staff at the two schools looking at that PE data and helping to help all kids pass all four sections of the physical fitness exam. We'd be remiss if we didn't mention that. Okay. I don't know how I'm doing on time, but thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
I'll be running the mile with all the students that's got to go.
You've run that with thoughts. I'm going to hold you to that. Wellness, wellness.
If I'd run for them, I'd run with them.
Yes.
What do you have, what's the time to be to pass the mile?
It depends upon the age of each student.
Oh, how about seventy? What would you be?
We'll give you about twenty-five minutes. Does anyone have any questions about what you saw? I'd be happy to go back to any slides and visit them if you have any questions. And as I said, if you have any specific building-based questions that you'd like to ask of the principals, they have their data here with them.
I just have a question. We looked at the data, and we, I, I didn't see our DURG with the SATs and the PSATs. Is there a reason why that wasn't included compared to our DURG?
So, is it in our appendix?
It is not in our appendix.
Okay.
We can get that to you. We are outperforming the average of the DURG, and we are in the top, you, I think it's about the top quarter of the DURG. So we are outperforming them, and we're encouraged about that as well.
For the first time this year, Michael and I decided to put together an appendix for you, and that really is more backup data to support the charts that we have. We want to be as transparent as possible. We're not trying to sugarcoat any of our data. We're giving it to you straight, kind of where we stand. This is where we are, and this is what we're working to improve. So you can always resort back to that appendix to look at it against the charts if you have any questions, and we'd be happy to answer them at any time. You don't have to ask them all now, because there is a lot here. We did give you a lot of these slides in advance through your Friday notes from the superintendent several weeks ago, so you've had some of these. They're not new, and none of them have changed, but we added a few because it's important to give you the global view of how we're doing.
Do we have, will you send us this presentation, or are we?
So it'll be, I, you should have the presentation? No? Okay. It'll be on the website. Perfect. Yes. And you'll have the, the appendices will be up there, too, so you'll have all that.
Am I to understand that in the budget for next year, we're going to see a phonics program in there, but we, we're not sure which one?
Yes.
So talk to me about this phonics program and why we like it.
So there's two programs right now that we're piloting side by side.
Plus the phonics in general.
One is...
Why do we like the phonics approach?
Why do we, oh, why do we like the phonics? Oh, well, we ident, we were identified, when I say we, it was the district, but Laura and I met with a core group of staff and took a look at our data to see where we fell. The state said, you're not teaching into phonics like you need to be, and we're seeing deficits in your third-grade reading scores because of it. There's, there was a big gap between how our regular ed and our special ed kids were performing, and we have a phonics program in place, but it was written a long, long time ago. From what I understand, it was the only phonics program that was available at that time, and new research has come out to suggest that if you wait to get to the letter Z until June, which that program does, you could be setting up kids to read behind grade level, several years behind grade level. So that was a push of the group of teachers that were a part of that work and the administrators to say, we can't, we can't wait, and we need to investigate other opportunities. And through COL, I shared with you the group of dedicated teachers who stepped up at Hillenplain and Northville to be a part of that pilot, and the memorandum that came out from my office of what it was going to entail. And I'm very excited that they continue to report very strong feelings for both programs. Some are very positive, mainly towards one, the other one they're working with, but they're finding it much more challenging to work from. The viewpoint we're taking is, it has to be, you have to be able to implement it as a teacher alongside the reading program we're already using without a lot of extra preparation, a lot of extra cutting, a lot of extra materials and support. But most importantly, it has to show that students are able to know and understand how to apply the skills within phonics. So we're getting mixed reviews on one program and very strong on the other, so I do think there may be a clear winner, but it's too early to determine.
Yeah, okay.
So that's why we'll meet until June.
All right, but no, I, just, I'm glad that we have a team effort to get where you are. Does anybody else have any?
I have a quick question, and, and I apologize, I think you did mention them, but the NWEA is what grades?
So we test in kindergarten through grade eight.
Through grade eight, and then the PSAT picks up with nine, ten, and eleven?
Nine, ten, and eleven, leading up to the SAT in grade eleven.
Okay, and the running records are K through?
K eight.
They're all, they're K eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, and obviously, the SAT is in eleven. And what about the, the new generation science standards?
So that is going to be given in grade eleven also?
Just eleven?
And it's also given in, hmm, let me think about that. I'm drawing a blank. Five and, thank you. Five and eight.
Five and eight, right? Five, eight, and eleven.
I mean, thank you.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions. For the phonics, what is the cost factor for that?
So we, I'm still compiling that.
I see.
Because it's not that expensive for either one of the programs.
Right.
And if we have to purchase one over the other, it'll just be for the remainder of the classrooms.
That's, that's what I'm going.
And I'm also looking at, and this is why I can't give you a price right now, but I can get back to you with it.
I, I, I'm not holding you to it.
I'm compiling it for budget.
But when you hear about two, obviously, if you're able to overlap them or, or, or put them together, will they get more, your dollars?
It'll, yes, it will be able to reuse the components, some, most of the components of both. One doesn't rely on year-over-year large purchases. In fact, I'm projecting a big savings from what we're currently spending on our program now to even make the change, and then a longer-term savings over time, regardless of which one we go with.
I actually like the idea. I think it makes a lot of sense, quite frankly, so I, I was just curious of the cost factor. The, the coding of the twenty-five students, when does the state close that timeframe window?
So I didn't, I wasn't aware that they even closed the window.
Neither was I. That's why I was asking. Surprise!
They, 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 they used to allow for additional, there was a longer window of time.
And they allow for modifications.
That your data manager can go in and make modifications.
That's what I thought.
They changed it last year, and they said, you know, this is it. We're closing the window. I want to say, it was, it's early, it's early on.
And when the window was closed, it was closed. There wasn't allowed any, there's no longer any modifications.
Yes.
Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, yes.
Because twenty-five students obviously takes those numbers, and when those numbers first came out, I do remember some community conversation, and rightfully so, but that's a, that's a large component, so I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
So, okay. I just had one last question, it was on the AP test.
Hmm, okay.
And I probably, if you go back to the slide on the AP testing.
Sure. I think I'm, I actually might be in the appendix. Yeah, I am.
And I thought it was pretty, pretty well presented.
This one, Wendy?
Yes.
Okay.
If you take a look at 2015 and 2018, I could be, is it because more students, is because the students now have to take the test? What, what is the?
It's a combination. It's also more students taking.
Correct.
If you take a look at the number of testers.
Right.
We, we've talked about this for the last couple of years of the board, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Yeah.
We've talked about this the last couple of years of the board, that we were going to come back to earth a little bit, where our projections, we had more and more students taking, and we're going to level off. This year in particular, and maybe, Michael, I know I've seen some other data, AP scores across the board went down a little bit in some courses as well, so, you know, there's a couple of courses that we think are pretty good hit on that contributed at sixty-seven percent. But maybe the next slide you can show, I think the next one has participants, yeah.
That's it. Okay.
So you'll see here that we're climbing. We had six hundred and sixty-six tests.
That's what I was looking at.
Given. That, that, there was probably three, three hundred-plus students taking those six hundred tests.
But it, if you take a look at the six sixty-six, am I reading this correctly, that the four thirty-three are the numbers that pass out of the six sixty-six?
That's right.
And when you compare that out to the four oh-one to the four twenty-six, is that, I mean, you're...
That's correct.
Well, you'd be comparing to the three twelve.
The three twelve, I'm sorry. But still, there's a large shift.
Yeah, so there's a large gap, but the one thing I also want to point out, it's in the appendix, if Alicia will flip. We've talked a lot about how these impact, like, the high school news, US News High School Rankings Index. This is a big driver of that, and the board has made an extreme commitment to AP over the last...
Yeah, it's one more.
Piece.
There it is.
This, to me, is the biggest indicator of why we've done this. So they use two-years-back data, but if you reflect back to when we started this conversation about four years ago, we were a while away from, A, the people around us, and B, the people that are like us. So when you look at places like Bethel four years ago or five years ago, we were getting outperformed drastically there. And now, when you look at how that has impacted, it's because kids have the opportunity. They have the access to get into those courses, and research shows that by providing the access and the opportunity, the test is the secondary piece of it, where, yes, it's beneficial for them, but the experience to go into that AP class, because it teaches you how to mitigate your time, how to study, how to practice, and it also involves higher-level questions across the board, and it's more of those practical applications.
And we saw this on our alumni survey. This came back to us, that the students who took AP courses felt extremely prepared and were very grateful just for the experience, even if they didn't receive the score of three or above for credit, that those were the courses that best prepared them. So, and the other piece is, hold that thought, because I remembered something else, too. As you move along and you keep, and you add AP courses, you're providing more opportunity for students to have access to taking the course content. And so you do see a plateau sometimes year-over-year as you start to gain, they gain more opportunities. You plateau for a little while, and then the scores spike up again in terms of overall pass rates. So you can't see that on this slide, but if I were to go back, I don't want to give you whiplash, it's like fifteen slides back, you'd be able to see that and how it's happened historically here for us.